Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, Feb. 27, 2025, and it's 5:00 p.m. Mr. Banano, can we have your own call, please?
Mr. Demiglio.
Here.
Mr. Grippo.
I am here.
Dr. Hapkin.
Present.
Ms. Inosensio. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. LaCorte.
Here.
Ms. Merris. Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Singh.
Here.
Thank you. Can you also read the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, Sunshine Act, copies of the public meeting notes were sent to The Courier-News, The Home Beach Tribune, The Star-Ledger, Franklin Reporter, Tabman to Franklin Township, Franklin Township Card Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTL Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to move into confidential session, please?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy. Seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jimmy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So there is a motion to adjourn to confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including student personnel matter, a special education settlement, a workman's compensation matter, and an interview for the Franklin High School principal. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We'll be back. Apologies, it is 7:37. We are seven minutes late to the regular session. We just came back from confidential motion. The confidential session was for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including student personnel matters, a special education settlement, a workman's compensation matter, and interviews for the Franklin High School principal. Minutes will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I request Erica to lead us with the pledge of allegiance? For those of you who are able to stand, please do so.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I request Nick to read the mission statement, please?
Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please, with the addendum?
So moved.
Moved by Bill. Can I get a second?
So seconded.
Seconded by Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we are on to Ms. Clark.
Good evening. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Mr. Mark Gunderman, the musical director of this fine group of students up here, who's going to tell you, tell us a little bit about them and what they'll be performing. Then they'll be performing, and then we'll ask them to come up and speak a little bit about themselves.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the dedication. You're bringing us here to perform. I'm introducing you five seniors from Franklin High School who have dedicated most of their educational lives to learning these instruments and music making. They even started in fifth grade and are those peers. And they're a major core of our performance. A lot of them have a full rehearsal before coming in, rehearsing musical, rehearsing stuff for... Anyway, they're going to play two pieces for you. First one they're going to do is a tango, and the second one is a waltz, which should be performed.
Okay, I'd like to ask you guys to come up when you're done. You can just introduce yourself, your grade, what you plan to do.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ariana Zelaya. Mr. Gunderman already said that I'm a senior. I appreciated the program. They let me switch my instrument when I was in sixth grade, and so far I've been stuck with the viola for almost my entire life, but I don't regret it. No, I really appreciate the pieces that he gives us. We're working on more, bringing more movie soundtrack pieces into the program, so look forward to that, even though I'm gone. And I guess his influence has also traveled into my own life because for college I will be going into the music industry. I will be learning the music production and music management part of it, so although I may lose my touch in my instrument, I will never forget my place here in the orchestra. So thank you, Mr. Gunderman.
Hi, my name is Andrea Lawrence. I play the violin, and I'm also a senior. And music is something I, when I was first offered to do it by my parents and my mom and my sister, I did not want to do it, but it has become something so vital to me as a person. I've never left this program, and it's continued to grow and blossom into things I didn't even expect it could become. Now, while Ariana is going into the music industry, I am not. I plan to become a lawyer, but I do hope that I can still stay in some orchestras because I don't want to lose my skill in this instrument, especially not after. I've done so much for it.
Hi, my name is Jacob Tolliver. I'm a senior, and I play the violin. Well, I've been, I've been playing the violin ever since I was about 10 years old, nine, 10 years old. And like, it's really made me grow like a whole lot throughout like my time playing. And you know, there was actually this one time I actually hated playing the violin. But over, like, I've overcame that since then, and like, I really find like, like playing violin or like any instrument in general, just like as a passion. And you really need to have like a fire for it in order to like, I don't know, like shine. And it's just really like, like life-changing playing an instrument, listening to music. And I'm also not going into the music industry as a career. I'm going into mechanical engineering, but I'll still have music in my life wherever I go. Thank you.
Hello.
My name is Christopher Essension, and I've been doing this since I was 10, like Jacob. And at first, it was a struggle, you know, like everything else, it was challenging. But with the new challenges, it helped me grow, and it became something that I love to do even now. I don't believe that I'm going to be doing this as a profession, but I'll always have that talent now. And I don't regret spending any of those years picking up this instrument at all, because it taught me to get over the hard things in life, that sometimes there will be things that seem unsurmountable, but you'll get over it, just with enough effort and with enough hard work, you can do whatever you want in life. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter. I'm the bass. I'm senior, right? This orchestra is so vital, right? It helps you express yourself. This is arts, the arts in the school, right? It's such a vital thing to keep around, to have this expression of self, right? It helps you grow, teaches you discipline, right? And ultimately, it's only a building block, but a very powerful base to build on top of. Now that you know how to express yourself, you know how to, you've learned how to play an instrument. It's, the point is, it's very important that this program and the arts stay in our school, right? So thank you for giving us a chance to play today.
Madam President, if I may, first off, you guys did an amazing job. Thank you so much. I just wanted to recognize the one common thread in all of your comments, where your love for music, and that love and inspiration comes from somewhere. And a lot of that is home and from your parents, but a lot of that also comes from our wonderful teachers. And Mr. Gunderman is a fine example of the inspiration that a music teacher and the influence a music teacher can have. So, you know, I just wanted to say to you, Mr. Gunderman, thank you so much. You do a wonderful job. You really do. I've always had the pleasure of walking through the fine arts, visual arts section of the building, stopping in, and the work that you do with these kids, it's tremendous, and I think that was evidenced tonight. So keep it up, and thank you.
So on behalf of the board, Mr. Gunderman, we have a certificate for you, and I would request you and the kids to come and take a picture with the board. Take your time. We'll just continue with our business. You take your time. Make sure your instruments get back carefully and safely. And we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report for February 2025, state aid notices. State aid notices were released earlier today. Unfortunately, the news is not great for us. Our district aid was cut by 3%, which represents nearly $650,000. We also lost, we also have a loss in what's called semi-revenue, which is connected to Medicaid of nearly $450,000. And in addition, on the expense side, we'll experience an increase in state tuitions for state facilities of nearly $400,000, which also comes out of your monthly state aid payment. So those variables, coupled with other challenges connected to inflation, salary benefits, and the increases there are going to make for a very challenging budget year, as you can imagine. So we're going to continue to work with our budget managers and the board's finance committee to find expense efficiencies and identify other sources of revenue. That will allow us to balance the FY, what we call '26, which is the '25-'26 school year budget. The preliminary budget presentation is scheduled for Tuesday, March 18th, which is when you'll hear about how we were able to make that all work. NJSCI, the New Jersey School Climate Improvement Survey, will be coming out at the end of April. And what I mean by coming out is it gets pushed out to our families and our students. This is an important survey. It gives students and families the opportunity to provide us with feedback on feelings of school belonging within our buildings. Please take the time to complete the survey, as the data gained is valuable to our improvement efforts in that area. A message announcing the survey and its release is forthcoming. The Zoofall School-Based Health Center, the Zoofall School-Based Health Center building, construction is near complete. I want to take this opportunity to thank the township and the council for their willingness to partner with the district and with Zoofall Medical Health to make this building and this program a reality. In just a few short months, once the building is complete, all of the necessary equipment is delivered and installed by Zoofall themselves. Zoofall will be operating a full-service community health center on the grounds of the Hamilton Street campus. This center will provide primary care, dental care, and behavioral health care for students and their families that reside within Franklin Township. We anticipate a grand opening for later this spring, and we are very excited about this program. And then Shrek Jr. I had the opportunity to witness another great, fine visual performing arts program last weekend. Actually enjoyed it with Mr. Demiglio, who was sitting next to me, a board member, and I had Mr. Grippo also at that meeting or at that program. We were sitting with the vice principal, who was assigned that night. It was a wonderful performance of Shrek Jr. put on by our middle school players. The student performers were just absolutely amazing. And the adults involved with the production, those that were directing, the teachers involved with directing the program and arranging it and arranging the choreography, all amazing. The building the sets and designing the costumes, my understanding, a lot of volunteer help there, and then, of course, those parents volunteering also to help organize the evening really did some amazing work. From start to finish, the musical was wonderful. My sincere gratitude on behalf of the board, my sincere gratitude to all those involved, and congratulations to the kids. Absolutely wonderful. Next up will be our spring high school musical, happening a little bit later in the spring. And this year, the musical for the high school is Cinderella. I encourage you all to make some time to join us and witness what likely will be a Broadway-type musical at our, in our high school gym, in our high school auditorium. And that's it for us. Thanks.
Thank you. So on to the board president's report. I want to begin by thanking Mr. Gunderman and the students of the string quartet from Franklin High School for their performance this evening. I'm sure you make your families proud, as well as our supervisor of fine visual performing and practical arts, Mr. Caesar Reyno, as proud as you make the Board of Education. I look forward to many such performances in our schools as we get ready to celebrate Youth, Art, and Music in Our Schools Month in March. Now on to some student news. Franklin High School junior Shannon Schwartz was recently named as the Legacy Driver to the Safety Bank, a nonprofit organization founded by professional race car driver Taylor Ferns. The Safety Bank's mission is to provide adequate safety equipment to racers in need. Through their legacy competition, this organization highlights the accomplishments of a well-rounded motorsports enthusiast. Shannon received the award due to her academic success at the high school, her community involvement with Girl Scout, Scouting America, the Food Bank, and local senior citizens' facilities, as well as her 11-year history of racing. Both she and her brother Thomas, a senior at Franklin High School, have recently graduated to the next level of racing. Shannon will be fully outfitted with new gear and will serve as an ambassador for the organization this season. Congratulations to Shannon on this achievement. Recent staff news. The Warrior Waves, a team of 39 individuals from the district, raised $12,000 as part of the seaside polar plunge to benefit the Special Olympics this past weekend. Now on to some upcoming events. The ESL Bilingual Department is hosting a family literacy night on Tuesday, March 4th, at the Hamilton Street campus of Franklin Middle School from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please RSVP via the link on the website headline. The Franklin Athletic Booster Club will be holding its annual Marsh Madness Tricky Tray will be holding its annual Marsh Madness Tricky Tray Event on Saturday, March 22nd, at Franklin High School. Doors will open at 4:30 p.m. and drawing begins at 6:00 p.m. More information about ticket purchases is available in the Community Events section of our website. And as Dr. Ravalley said, the high school's Spring Musical Cinderella will be performed during the weekends of March 28th to 30th and April 4th to 6th. A special character tea party is also scheduled for our younger fans on March 30th, before the matinee. More information for these events can also be found in the Headline and Community Events section of the website. Also on March 30th is the Warrior for Life Sneaker Ball, which will be held from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Imperia by Daba Event Space. Proceeds will help to provide scholarships for Franklin High School Warriors who excel in academics, athletics, the arts, community service, social consciousness, and philanthropy. To date, the Warrior for Life Scholarship Foundation has awarded over 95,000 in scholarships to deserving students in Franklin Township. Also, many thanks to that group, as well as the Triple B Foundation, who will be donating additional sensory items for students at Hillcrest. You may recall that this group made a similar donation earlier this school year to benefit Clermont Elementary School. Also, thanks to community member Winnie Lim for the donation of various musical instruments to support the Franklin Township Public Schools Music Program. And finally, we have a minimum session on Feb. 28th at Franklin High School because they're hosting the Regional Wrestling Tournament. That's it for the Board President's Report. Now I would like to make, I would request someone to make a motion to open comments from the public on agenda items only, five minutes per speaker. Moved by Nancy.
Second.
Seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion for public comments on agenda items only is now open. Please state your name and address, if you're an adult, and you can come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan White. I live in Somerset. My children go to Franklin High School. For the Superintendent regarding his letter, I'm just wondering whether or not any of the changes that we're seeing with the federal government are having an impact on our school budgets. I know you mentioned some monies that are, that were not receiving related to Medicaid and some other things. Are we having issues related to the new administration in the federal government? And what can we do as residents to talk to our congresspeople or anyone else to try and help alleviate some of those challenges?
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Singing, I want to make a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment by Nancy.
Second.
Seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Since we're running out of time and we have to go, yes. I just want to make a statement, since we're running out of time and we have to go back into confidential to finish the motions for confidential. We will, we have the committee and liaison reports, which are online. So we will not have the board members read the reports tonight. Dr. Ravalley, would you like to respond?
Sure. Mr. White, I will say, I did mention, I'm looking for my notes, I apologize. I did mention the semi-revenue, which is tied to Medicaid. Now, I don't know if that's a result of anything that's happened at the state and federal level. I did hear the governor's address, and he did talk about less Medicaid money coming into the state. So I can only assume that that's why the projection is much less for us than it's been in the previous years. Other than that, we've not got any indication. We typically do, as practice, budget about 85%. Is that right, Mr. Freed? Of grants? Yeah. So we typically, as a practice over the years, have built our budget with a 15% cut, if you will, in federal funding. And all intentions have been the same this year. We haven't been, there's no indication that that will happen. But, you know, that's always been the responsible practice within our industry, anyway. So, you know, we're going to do that again. But again, I can't, I don't know enough about Medicaid to speak to that. But I can tell you semi-revenue is tied to Medicaid. And our projection is that $450,000 less. And my understanding from my colleagues, they saw similarly reduced projections as well. That's the only impact we have been made aware of to date.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. We're on to new business now.
All right, let's get ready with new business. All right, I would make a motion that we accept M1, R1, through R1, M1. Okay, here we go. I'm sorry. I make a motion that we accept R1, M1, A1, A2. A3 has been affirmed as ma- A3. A4, as Madam President said, that we are going to table this until we go from-
Until after confidential?
A5, A6, I'm sorry, with time, I'm not going to say the names of each particular item. You could read that yourself. A7, A8, A9, A10, A11, A12, A13, A14, A15, B1, B2, B3, B4, B5, B6, B7, B8, B9, B10, C1, C2, C3, C4, C5, C7, P1, P2. And we have added addendum to P2, which is addendum number eight?
Addendum A.
A, A, addendum A.
Did you say C6?
Yes.
And that completes the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the table to move R1, M1, A1 to A3, Table A4, A5 to A15, B1 to B10, C1 to C7, P1, P2 with addendum A. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grippo. Any discussions? Erica? Jimmy?
No.
Lori?
No discussion.
Nick? Walter? Nancy? Dennis? Okay. Can we have roll call, Brian?
That's okay.
He's-
Oh, yeah. I said yes. Mr. DiMeglio?
Okay, I-
Put your microphone on.
I will abstain from A6, A7, A10, as it relates to Elizabeth Avenue School, P2, as it relates to Elizabeth Avenue School, and yes to everything else. Which one?
A11.
A11.
Abstain from A11.
So, just to be clear, abstaining from A6, A7, A10, as it relates to Elizabeth Avenue School, A11, and P2, as it relates to Elizabeth Avenue School. Everything else is yes. Thank you. Mr. Grippo? Thank you, sir. Dr. Hopkin?
Yes.
Ms. Innocencio?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, for everything except for P2, as it relates to, I'm abstaining from the appointment of Franklin High School's Spring Intramural Girls Coaches.
Thank you. Ms. LaCorte?
Yes.
Ms. Maris? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
All motions carried.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so we have some good news here. Drumroll, please. We are here to announce the new principal for Franklin High School, Ms. Hennessy Miles. Welcome.
Hello, testing. There you go. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Ravalley, Board of Education, and esteemed constituents of Franklin Township, I stand before you today with immense gratitude and a deep sense of honor. It is truly a humbling experience to be appointed as the principal of Franklin High School. And I am filled with pride, knowing that a first-generation Dominican-American woman from Jersey City has been entrusted with the responsibility of leading one of the best high schools in New Jersey. This moment is not just a personal achievement, but a testament of the power of representation. I have called myself a Franklin transplant since I came here five years ago. I remember the day I sat across Mr. Wilson and Mr. Fico, sharing all my hopes and dreams for the RTS Alternative School Program that I was interviewing for. I am happy to say that with the support of many of the people sitting in this very room. I was able to transform those hopes and dreams into plans and actions that have focused on student success at every step of my journey. Shirley Chisholm said, "Service is the rent you pay for room on this earth." Serving the Franklin community has been my favorite thing to do in all the roles I have held since 2020. Having the honor to serve a community of 2,500 students and staff is a joyful experience. I cannot wait to begin. I am eager to help all of our students look forward to coming to school every day in preparation for a future that they are passionate about. Creating programs and opportunities for our students' futures is vital. Helping students feel seen, families be heard, and teachers and staff be supported, those are all areas that I have specialized in, and I can't wait to continue at Franklin High School. I have had the privilege to work alongside some of the most talented and passionate people in education, and I would be remiss not to acknowledge them. Thank you to Dr. Ravalley, the Cabinet, and the Board of Education for always supporting me, my programs, and my evolution as a school leader. Dr. Solomon and Mrs. Solomon, thank you for taking me under your wing and providing me with mentorship and support. To my husband and children, thank you for encouraging me and putting up with me when I'm hosting my dozens of family engagement events or when I'm at a coffee shop writing my dissertation all weekend long. To my parents and siblings, I am everything I am because of you. Last but not least, to my PGM family, I love you dearly. And remember that no matter what, we're better together, Panda Bauer. Thank you all.
Okay, now we're on to Good of the Order. And we'll go to my left today.
Madam President?
Oh, I missed comments from the public. Sorry. I was just so excited. Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to open for comments for the public. Five minutes per speaker, any topic.
So moved, Madam President?
Okay.
Second.
Second.
So second.
Move my Mr. Grippo, and a lot of people said second, so Brian, whoever you heard first. Okay, you got it. Okay, comments from the public, any topic, five minutes per speaker. Please come state your name and address, and come to the podium.
Everyone, Montez Anderson, Jade Court. I'll write my actual door number down on the paper. I'm not going to put that since y'all recorded me. I am over at Franklin Park School, and I have a child over at the high school. I actually want to acknowledge the youth that were here performing, as well as the ones that are sitting in this space today. Because it was something that they said in regards to making sure that the arts in this town stays. And then something that Hennessy said as well in regards to congratulations for being the high school principal, but acknowledging the amount of diversity that we have, as well as the space that we're in with the way the country is going. So it leads me to ask, how are we, how are you as elected board members by the community members proactively looking towards what can possibly come down the pipeline with federal funding being taken away? And we are a district that prides ourselves on our diversity initiatives here. And that is at attack right now. And those that are still holding it has a chance of losing their federal funding. We've watched Medicaid be cut. We are watching SNAP be cut. And we're already in a battle of food insecurity here in this county, or just period in this town. So I just want to know, and this is not even just for Dr. Ravalley, it's mostly for those that we voted to sit here. How are you proactively looking at what is happening so that we can ensure that our children are showing up in the schools feeling safe, feeling seen, and our staff are also feeling safe and seen and not afraid to have conversations in their classroom with retaliation of what is happening nationally? I also want to address the factor of what are we doing about Twitter currently known as X? Because we use this platform. But as of right now, the person who oversees it does not agree with the mission that we hold here in Franklin Township. So are we looking to disband that and not allow our staff to use that platform and fully go over to Instagram? Because that's how we're communicating. I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing and the relationships we're having with the vendors in these towns or softwares, it's a reflection of what we, as Franklin Township, are holding in our mission statement every day. So that is it. I know that we can't have the banter back and forth, but those were concerns. But our students, they want to be seen, and they want to ensure that however you're representing them is the best of their interest. Because I just watch lawyers, mechanic engineers, music business students up here. We are producing talent out of this town. And I just want to make sure that we continue to do that and not get lost in everything that's happening. But we need to be proactive and not reactive. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't have to state your name or address as a minor.
Oh, okay. Um, hello, my name is Zoe Wilson. I'm a sophomore at Franklin High School. I first wanted to say I love to dance, dancing my whole life. I've been dancing since I was four years old. I became a dancer at a private studio where I had much success. Last year, Ms. Wallace started a dance team, a competitive dance team. It's great. She encouraged us to work hard and to stay focused and promised us to succeed. This year, our goals were upped. Last year, we competed at the state championships. We won third. Yeah. This year, we, we upped our goals to compete at regional, states, and nationals, which is a huge learning experience. I feel like we have learned a lot. This, this year, we were exposed to many different groups and style, many. We were exposed to groups of different styles, abilities. Sorry. This year, we were exposed to groups of different styles and abilities than us, but we were still able to hold our own. When we competed at nationals the first time ever, we were up against teams who were competing at the le, at the level for decades. Although we did not place at nationals, we were able to beat some legacy, some legacy teams, which Coach reminds us of our victory itself. No matter what happens, Coach always shows us how we grow and evolve as a team. This year, we placed third again at states. Competing this year was a lot together than last year. On top of we, on top of that, we were able to see how we influenced other teams. This, last year, we competed against a team that didn't really have the hip-hop style that we do, but this year, we came back and needed the exact same style. Well, um, shows us that we are influencing people outside of our township. We know as a team, we are better than third place. A third place win, however, we grow. We grow, we need more. However, to grow, we need more. Coach sacrificed a lot of time for us. She constantly, she's constantly juggling her responsibilities at her job at Franklin High School and her part-time job. She has devoted more time to us by funding, but... By... I'm sorry. By funding restrict, didn't that? I'm sorry. But funding restricts that, I'm sorry. On top of her coaching duties, Coach has figured out how to pay for all that we need without... Barring our parents too much. We have constructed numerous fundraising activities from popcorn fundraising to shaking cans out of supermarkets. She has also created the bridge between dance, dance team and the community in Franklin by hosting game nights for the elementary school kids, um, formation... Oh, to foster a relationship among the grade levels. She has also created a junior dance team, which we taught elementary school teams a routine that they performed at, performed at a halftime show at a basketball game. This is a lot to take on for anyone, but to take all of this on as a club is outstanding. The problem is that it is not structured enough. Coach is trying to create a dance... Is trying to create a dance culture that will hopefully turn into a feeder program like other schools have. But that cannot happen if we remain a club. Coach, who... We need a coach who is paid as a coach, not a club. The amount of effort that goes into running a club does not compare to what goes in. What goes into. Not only... Thank you. Oh, we just really like, we would really appreciate if we got more funding for what we love and to do in this...
Thank you.
Good evening. My daughter, Zoe Wilson. She's a sophomore at Franklin High School, and as she says, part of the dance team. She's one of the original members. Last year, I don't think many thought the team would be able to accomplish much. However, in four months, they were only a team for four months. They were able to compete on a state level, and as she said, they brought home a third-place trophy. Fast forward a year, and the team is still going strong despite being grossly unfunded and competing against teams that have not only have many more years of experience over our team, but money. They were able to show that Franklin is a formidable team. We placed again in states and went to both national and regional competitions. What I found to be disheartening is that despite our team being just as talented as others, the money being poured into those teams can be seen at first glance. From the quality of their warm-ups and costumes to the number of guest choreographers they bring in, money makes a huge difference. I have to give kudos to Coach Wallace, who through sheer grit and utilizing her concepts strategically, has been able to expose this team to a venue they never thought they would be able to reach. Many of the team members were able to meet some of their dance heroes when we went to nationals earlier this month. Coach brought in choreographer, a choreographer who not only worked with the team on technique, but also talked to them about her experiences dancing for Beyonce and the Brooklyn Nets. This has inspired many to seriously consider dance as a career option. My daughter is in the CTE program. Even though this program is geared toward preparing them for a dance career, she never thought that would amount to more than being a dance instructor at a dance school. Coach Wallace exposed them to people who showed them how to monetize their talent in other ways. Parallel, paralleling, um, their performances at football and basketball games to their own and how they can use that as a platform to being a professional dancer in more than just a dance school. I also appreciate how much emphasis Coach Wallace puts on academics and behavior. Coach is constantly monitoring Genesis, assuring that her team is in good academic standing and is willing to work with their teachers when they fall behind. She talks to the girls about their parents and how they dress is a reflection of more than just them. Coach Wallace is more than just a coach. She is a mentor to these young people. And when you look at the team, most of the girls are ladies of color. She can talk to them about issues that are fa, that they are facing in not just school, but society as a whole. I grew up with the mentality that it takes a village to raise a child. I am so happy that Coach Wallace is part of my village. Finally, I'd like to address the fact that I keep referring to Kalia Wallace as Coach. As stated previously, Kalia Wallace goes above and beyond her for her team. She teaches them choreography. She exposes them to a world larger than they can imagine. She promotes academia. She mentors them, and she does all of this on a club stipend. Wallace took on this job under the pretense that this would be a competitive team. She has done her part, or the bargain. It is time that she is compensated for her time, expertise, and commitment. It is ridiculous to believe that she can continue to do what she does without the proper funding. These kids love this team and love Coach Wallace. We parents implore you, the board, to recognize the Franklin Competitive Dance Team as a true team and fund them appropriately so we can truly show everyone the war, what warriors are made of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Jonathan White. I live at Seven Gary Court in Somerset, New Jersey. Before I start, can I have all of the members who are here of the Competitive Dance Team, please stand? I just wanna note that these are young people who not only have schoolwork and responsibilities at home, but I'm sure would rather be home on their phones, you know, on their TikToks and everything right now. But they're here because it's an important thing to them. My daughter Peyton, I'm sure she's embarrassed out of mentioning her name, is a freshman at Franklin High School and a first-year member of this team. She's dedicated as much time to this underfunded program as she has to playing varsity soccer for the high school. Dance is in my daughter's blood. She's always been a creative, notwithstanding being an excellent academic as well. She's a part of our CTE, CTE high school program, but the Competitive Dance Team gives her unique opportunities that aren't available with CTE, including representing the school with pride at our football and basketball games locally, at national competitions and regional competitions as well. The experience these types of opportunities bring to young women, particularly women of color, has a tremendous effect on their confidence, their overall mental health, their leadership, and their physical health. As mentioned earlier, the girls have also participated in service by mentoring and teaching children as young as six-years-old about dance. These same young kids performed at halftime during one of our high school basketball games in front of our own high school and Franklin family. When I've gone to the competitions that these young women have participated in, the thing that stands out to me the most is they are the most diverse dance team of any team I've seen at all of the competitions we've been to. Largely, even in a, a, a field such as hip-hop, you see largely students who are not black, not brown, participating in these competitions. But our kids are there and giving their heart and trying to perform with pride for our school and for our district. And what we would ask of the district is that they support these kids as much as this, these kids are supporting our school by funding this program and funding our coach, who has committed large amounts of time to preparing these girls to be professional and excellent in the craft that they all adore so much. So, it is with unwavering support that I ask the board to efficiently recognize our program and to fund it appropriately so that our young ladies can take their representation of our warrior spirit, spirit to the next level. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, hello, my name is Anaya Rotten, and I'm a junior at Franklin High School, and I'm also a part of the dance team. So, I'm going to be reading a word from Dr. Musa Abdullah, Director of Social Services from New Horizons Community Charter School. To whom it may concern, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to formally request that Franklin High School recognize dance as a sport and include it as a part of its school's athletic programs. Dance requires immense physical endurance, strength, flexibility, and discipline, qualities that align with those required in traditional sports such as basketball, soccer, and track. As an administrator in an educational institution that currently sponsors a dance team, I see firsthand the impact that our team has had on the academic, social, emotional, and participatory levels of the team members. Currently, many high schools and organizations, including the National Feder, Federation of State and High School Associations, acknowledge dance as a competitive sport. Dance teams engage in rigorous training, conditioning, and choreography, often competing at regional and national levels. By classifying dance as a sport, Franklin High School would provide student dancers with the same opportunities, resources, and recognition as other athletes. Including dance as a sport would benefit the student body by encouraging teamwork, promoting fitness, and fostering school spirit. It would also provide opportunities for scholarships and future career prospects for students who are passionate about dance. Franklin High School parents would love the opportunity, the opportunity to discuss this further and would explore what steps need to be taken to make this a reality. Thank you for your time and consideration. And just a personal word, I've changed my entire route to go full-time at VOTEC, but after coming to the basketball games and seeing this team and being inspired, I've made the change to now go share time, and I've sacrificed a lot to be on this team, and it means a lot to me. And Coach Wallace is somebody who I feel like really saw me because I've been dancing all my life, and this team is really a manifestation of everything that I've wanted to do. So, I'm just really thankful towards her and my team, and it would just be an honor if you guys would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lily Fortuno, and I'm a junior at Franklin High School. I'm also one of the team captains, and this is my second year on the team. This team has taught me dedication and that hard work really does pay off. Ever since the team has started by my coach, Ms. Wallace, who has dedicated so much time keeping this team running, it has been an eye-opening and influential experience from learning leadership skills to experiencing what the world of dance looks like after high school. This team has awarded our hard work, like funding and having classes open to our elementary school students with so many opportunities. One of them being our recent trip to nationals, where we were able to compete against the best of the best from across the nation. In our most recent state competition, we were awarded third place in the sportsmanship award, which really shows how dedicated and committed we are to reaching our goal of success for this team. I feel that this dedication should be recognized and that our team should be recognized as a sport. Also, I would like to say that this team has brought me just so much joy, and I always look forward to practice because I know that as a community, as a team, we always stick together. Even our parents and our families that are part of this team, we have such a tight bond, and it just, you know, we have a tight community, so.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Selena, and I am a sophomore in Franklin High School, and I'm also a dancer on the Franklin High School Dance Competitive Team. I wanna start by asking, what is your why? Why are you here right now? Why are you in the position you are in right now? What motivated you to take this job? As a dancer for this team, I've been in the dance program ever since it was offered in elementary schools. And ever since I stepped on a stage, my why was exponentially growing. I do what I do not only because I simply love being on stage, but because it is a part of my culture. Today marks the day that the Dominican Republic obtained its independence, and we've been dancing ever since. I dance because it's inside my DNA. I dance because I want young people to see me, to see us on TV screens and say, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, she looks like me, or, mami, ella habla como yo. And with an increase in funding, we can inspire more young people to find their whys. With an increase in funding, we can show these other schools and other districts that they not like us.
Thank you. It's a hard one to follow.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm a senior at the high school. No, just kidding. My name is Pete Severino. I'm at the 136 Drake Road in Somerset, New Jersey. Just wanted to read a letter from my daughter, Jada Severino, who graduated. She's a freshman at Montclair State. She felt passionate enough to write this letter, and I'm gonna share it with you. Good evening, board. I'm Jada Severino. I'm one of the former dance team captains. I write to you on behalf of a dedicated and talented dance team, which I was a part of last year. As captain and a dancer who's been through ups and downs and seeing this team face financial challenges, I feel that I'm, that it's incredible. challenges, I feel that it's incredible, I feel that I'm an incredible source to speak on the subject. The lack of funding and advocacy and support really takes a toll on the dance team. Not only basically, not only with the basics like costumes and costumes and, let me see, not only with the basic costumes, but it also affects the motivation of the dancers and coaches, Coach Wallace. It also takes a mental toll on the team. It sends the message to your dancers that this team isn't as important as other teams such as Cheer, which they have seen with their own eyes get the recognition and support that they also deserve. Dance team brings a lot of energy to the football games, to basketball games, the drills and dances, they drill and dance for hours and hours and hours, making sure that the dance looks clean and organized to be performed well for the school. And I know how drilling hard is, I know how hard drilling is. It also speaks volumes that we have long practices, and this is not easy. Yes, dance is a sport, and dances are athletes as well, even more so, they compete, they compete, which we have done three times now this season, coming in third in the state and bringing back a trophy for the school. They are making history here and should be encouraged and supported through that process. Coach Kay is the foundation of the team. She always encourages us and supports us through that process. She works tirelessly to pour into the growth of her dancers, and she genuinely cares for the dancers and the team. She deserves more support, she deserves more pay. If she hasn't, if it wasn't for Coach Kay, we don't know where this dance team would be. If she wasn't here, what would the halftime shows look like at Franklin? For the basketball teams, for the basketball games, and for the football games? Give it some thought. As we all know, that arts are a pivotal part and well-rounded of the well-rounded education, and the dance team exemplifies the power, creativity, hard work, and teamwork that enriches students' lives. However, despite the contributions that the dance team makes to our school, community, and growing concerns regarding funding and support received, it stands that resources are important, and all we do, all we're doing is asking now for support with our resources to be, so that we can enable to get the costumes that we need, proper training facilities, and so forth and so forth. In closing, I'm advocating for a substantial increase in funding to ensure that our dance team has the tools that it needs to thrive. With the right amount of financial backing, I know that Franklin High School Dance Team will definitely be the force that is reckoned to be. Go Warriors!
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alicia Thompson, and I live at 131 Arlington Avenue in Somerset, New Jersey. I have a daughter in kindergarten and a son in pre-K at Franklin Park School and a one-year-old at home. I'm a school-based bilingual speech-language pathologist and a private practice owner licensed in Washington DC and New Jersey. I have two questions. Is there currently a push for related services to be provided in the classroom using a push-in model? And if so, what is the reasoning for this? Not every case is cookie cutter, and as a member of the Special Education Parents and Advisory Group, I'm interested in the district's stance on this, despite what information may be listed in IEPs. The second thing that I wanted to discuss, at Franklin Park, there's a huge pre-K population, and there's lots of pros and cons about the inclusion model that's being used now, depending on who you ask. My pre-K son has an excellent teacher, Mrs. Hoff, and I have no complaints, but many parents do, so I just wanted to know, in what ways is the district assisting teachers and staff with this transition as an inclusion model is being pushed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina Duncan, 8 Wexford Way, Somerset. It's really a tragedy that I have to speak here again. It's even more tragic that the corruption that I've learned in the past few weeks, few months at this point here in Franklin Township. I really believed that the right thing would be done. I followed the rules, filed the HIV report, talked to Marjlyn, talked to principals, sent emails. I did everything that I should have done correctly, but unfortunately, we're still here today. An abuse victim was forced to take a break from the basketball team to heal from her abuser. Why does the abuser have more rights than the victim? Why do you Franklin Township Board of Education continue to allow a serial abuser to harm our girls? The girls on the basketball team wrote letters to the coach to express how they feel about him. Why are we protecting a criminal? Darrell Robinson is a serial abuser who continues to abuse because each one of you are allowing him to do this. Each one of you has now given him permission. What will it take for you to act? Abusers follow proven patterns and escalate when they are not stopped. You have already allowed sexual abuse. Are you waiting for physical abuse? Or are you waiting for the call about the suicide attempt or the potential funeral? What are you waiting for? Why are you supporting child abuse and discrimination against women? Let me give you a small example of the conduct of your professional coach that you hired. The text message I'm about to read was in response to a conversation I had with Mr. Bruno.
Excuse me, Ms. Duncan. Can I just interrupt you for a minute? Can you pause the timer, please? We have students in the audience. I would request that you do not name any staff members because it's violation of personnel information.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so regarding, so I talked to the A.D. regarding a uniform for my daughter. Since she transferred late and the other girls chose their number, I offered to pay for an additional uniform so she could have the number she had for years at the school, since the school did not have it in stock. This was a casual, calm conversation with the A.D., who is in charge of uniforms and had nothing to do with the coach. But as you can see, his narcissism took over, and you can easily see his mental instability. A woman challenging a narcissistic man is clearly laid out in his response. Just spoke to the A.D. I'm going to tell you like I told him. When I make a decision, it's final. You can continue to go behind my back to keep asking and checking things you want and try to pay for it, but that's not the type of program I will have nor will tolerate. So moving forward, you'll have to make a decision. Either understand when I make a decision and say that's what's done, that is it, or keep trying to do things your way. This isn't AAU, I'm not bringing financial politics into my program. This isn't the first instance, and I've already spoken up, so now if it happens again, there will have to be a sit-down meeting with you, me, and athletics to discuss next course of action. Hopefully, you understand the severity of this matter, why I'm addressing it now. After this text message, I immediately called a meeting with the coach and the two A.D.s. One of the A.D.s claimed that the coach was going through distress due to his friend's murder. Is it not the A.D.'s job to protect the students, not the coach? Since the coach was mentally unstable, why was he temporarily removed from his coaching position? Why was he allowed to coach being mentally unstable? Why is the A.D. not capable of doing his job and protecting the students? Also, given the severity of the situation, are the girls safe? What type of person is the coach exposing our girls to? Murderers? Why Darrell's contract was, or sorry, why the coach's contract was renewed? Did you take into consideration the multiple plates last year against him? Or did Marjlyn fail to, or did the A.D. fail to document the incidents? To my knowledge, there was an HIV, a separate HIV file, and three separate players filed separate reports. How many complaints need to be filed for you as the Board of Education to remove him? We are supporting special treatment. Are we allowing people that have people in politics to be able to stay employed because of this? What do we value more, our girls or politics? This is really a sad day. I used to believe in justice, but I'm clearly realizing that this is not what anybody in Franklin Township wants. Since our last meeting, there is no longer a female presence on the coaching staff. Both female coaches last, left. The last one left last week. If this doesn't speak volumes, I don't know what will. What is it going to do to take action? The situation has affected my daughter more than I ever thought it could. She has been receiving weekly counseling to learn techniques so that she does not get abused again in the future. Unfortunately, she is still at the point where she cannot be around him. She will not even sit on the bench with her teammates because of the trauma and the PTSD. My daughter is a junior. She has played basketball her whole life. Now she has to give up her dream due to the abuse. This is my last cry for you to hear me. If I continue to go in these f ears and I'm left with no other choice to take this public and contact politicians to help, for help, for justice, for my daughter and all of the girls that are suffering from this abusive coach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Blair Wilson, Franklin High School's head football coach. I live at 117 Johnny Bush. But I'm standing here in front of you, not as Franklin High School head football coach, I'm standing here as a dance dad. I understand the whole process it takes to make a club into a varsity sport. I also understand that it can be done, and I want to just say, as a coach, to see what Ms. Wallace has done with the girls in the past two years, like my daughter's been dancing since four, so I've been a dance dad about as long as I've been coaching. The girls have evolved. They came in and they were a little bit, first year, it was first year, they did a good job. Second year they came in, definitely improved. I'm asking just to think about it, I don't know, put it on an agenda, whatever you guys need to do. It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to happen next year, but it needs to happen. The dance program, the fine arts program in this district is unbelievable, and they're a part of it. You know, from the middle schools, when I was a middle school coach, I used to go to see my daughter dance and my niece dance, and I was recruiting the boys that could move pretty good, like, oh, I would talk to Miss Strand, what's his name? I got to get him out of the football team. But it's just a great program. They need your backing. That's what everybody's here saying. We're asking kindly that they need their backing. And they're going up against a lot of schools that have the backing and competing at this point, and they're going in there outmatched, but they're still at the top. They came in third in the state. I think this program is great. The funding for the coach, I'll just speak for all the coaches, you're never going to get paid enough to be a coach if you really have your heart into it. It's a 24-hour job. My wife will tell you, my phone always ringing off the hook about something going on. As a coach, you're usually a fireman, you try to put out little fires before they become big fires. Just think about it, and let's, you know, really take into consideration, dance is a sport, and it will really benefit our town. And my new thing is, stay public, okay? These girls can go different places than go on the dance teams, at different, you know, they can take, go parochial where they're getting the funding. But let's stay public where we can do everything that's going on where people think the parochial schools are better because they offer more. No, you can do everything you want to do in a public setting. Thank you for your time, that's it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deborah Perillo. I'm at 128 Grauser Road. This is my daughter Sophia. She's mortified to have to be up here, although she really loves the attention. She is the co-president for Student Council, she's student government, she's on, she's on the executive leader, leadership committee, so many things she does. And I am the co-president of the PTSO, and I have stood before you on many occasions speaking to the board, requesting that very careful consideration was given to the decision that was made for the new principal, because as we know, we have very large shoes to fill, you know, to follow Dr. Solomon. So with that being said, I've, you know, made it very, I was always very open about how important it is to have someone that's committed, that is going to be here for the longevity, committed to just making sure that they see classes through and through. And so with that being said, we are hoping that you guys unanimously have made the proper decision, and we feel that you have, we're very excited. So we just really wanted to welcome Ms. Miles and just let her know that we're very excited, and we're going to work alongside her wherever she needs us. There's a lot of PTSO members here, so on behalf of them and many, many parents, we just want to welcome her and say thank you. And we're going to give you like a day or two to get like used to things, and then we're going to be, we're going to be in touch, so. So thank you very much. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I'm very excited, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Johnston. I live at 34 Norwich Place in Franklin. Do I need to sign my name here?
After.
Oh, after, okay. Yeah, I want to say I'm in support of the petition to have this coach of the basketball team dismissed. Now, bullying is a subject I feel very strongly about. You know, I'm 71 years old. I went to school in the 1960s, and I myself was the victim of bullying. I know what it's like, and all my teachers knew about it, but no one offered to help me. None of my teachers offered to help me, and I was even too scared to even tell my parents about it. And so I suffered all those years, I know what it's like. Now, the first thing that strikes me here is that we have a case of nepotism here, okay? Nepotism? Because this coach, he is the son of a Somerset County Commissioner. Could I say her name, or I think you all know who she is, right? Right? That is a very extreme case of nepotism. Even if, even if it's not true that he has advantages, the perception is there that the fact that his mother is the most powerful and influential politician in Somerset County, that the perception is there, even just a perception that if he gets in trouble, that she could, she can pull strings to help him keep his job, and that gives him an unfair advantage, okay? Even if it's not happening, just the perception is there, and we do not, we do not have a level playing field, all right? That's my first point. My second point is, why do we even have this, what's it called, an HIV complaint mechanism? Harassment, intimidation, and so on? I mean, you're making it very difficult for a parent to do something about this bullying. You make her fill out all these different forms, going through a long, complicated, bureaucratic red tape, just to prove to you that something is wrong, and then you let the guy off on a technicality. I mean, okay, so that's what I'm saying. Your coaches should be policing themselves. It should never even get to the point where a parent has to intervene. It should never even get to that point, okay? All right, so that's what I wanted to say. And also, can I ask you, could you do, have it do a more timely job? And also, can I, I ask you, could you do, have it do a more timely job of posting videos of these meetings to your BOE website? Last year, you were having meetings every month, but, but you were not posting the videos of the meetings to your website, at least not for a period of six months. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so like, so this meeting right here, can you like do a timely job of posting the video to your website? You know, a week or two weeks or, you know, so just so we won't have to wait for six months, okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, I sign my name here?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shanice Myers. I have lived in Franklin for seven years now. I have two teenage daughters who are athletes. And I came in here tonight disgusted and appalled. So I was very happy to see these girls, these young girls, dancing and advocating for themselves and their coach and an example of what proper coaching looks like and can do and what proper encouragement looks like. But this nonsense with the basketball team is horrendous. It is unacceptable and there is no excuse for it. I myself was an athlete, both of my kids are athletes. They competed at national competition last month. My, I'm friends with Olympians. My kids have access to people who have been participating in the Olympics for the last 20 years. They themselves, as coaches, would never. And they wouldn't tolerate from a coach the behavior that has been depicted by this coach. And it's not been one, two, or three. There have been multiple complaints and I don't understand why this is continuing because it is a failure by all of you for these girls on this team. If you cannot coach without dehumanizing people and degradation and sexual, it's disgusting. And to sit here as a mother of girls who are athletes, I'm embarrassed of Franklin. And that is why I came here tonight. Pure disgust and embarrassment. We have to do better for these girls. They have to know that they matter and at school, it's supposed to be safe. We are supposed to be preparing them as young women, as athletes, to go into the world and when they experience bad behavior, to be able to stand up for themselves and say, I deserve better than this. We are not supposed to be condoning and encouraging it and saying, well, if you want to be here, if you want to play, this is what you deserve. It is unacceptable. You all need to do better.
Thank you.
Madam President, seeing no further public comment, I move the close to public session.
So second.
Motion to close by Bill, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment session is now closed. We're on to Good of the Order and I will begin on my left with Nick.
Okay, I want to also give kudos to the cast and the producers and the parents of Shrek. Dr. Ravalli said we were there last Friday. What an amazing production. So much energy on that stage from our students. I want to also send out kudos to the Project Graduation and Franklin High School PTSO for a wonderful designer bag bingo that they did, raised a lot of money for their programs. Project Graduation also had a clothing drive on February 8th. Believe it or not, $1,700 just for collecting used clothes, which goes towards the event on the night of graduation. And then Project Graduation will have the Food Truck Festival coming up this year again on May 17th from 12 to 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter?
Hennessy, soon to be Dr. Miles. Congratulations. We are very excited for you. We can tell that you are very excited and you're gonna come in, do some great things. And once again, remember that we are definitely here to support any, any and every, all of your efforts. So once again, congratulations to you and your family. I have a quote. "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." James Baldwin. Young lady, our dance team, continue, congratulations on your success. Continue congratulations on your future success and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hennessy, congratulations and you're gonna do a wonderful job in your new position and your family at Pine Grove is always gonna be your family. You're just gonna make a bigger family. To, it was actually really cool tonight to see so many kids, not just our amazing dance team, but see other kids get up and speak and so beautifully. And so like you were adults, better than probably, definitely better than I'm speaking, but it just was like really nice to, to your presentations and, and your passion. It's just very nice to see. So thank you for that. And I want to congratulate Arden, who is a new certified board leader, which is a big deal. There's not a lot of them in the state. And it's the highest level that you can get in New Jersey school boards. And she's a certified board member and certified board leader. And we were a certified board of education, which is a big deal. So congratulations to Arden.
Thank you. Moving on to Erica.
Hey, I'm gonna try to make it quick here. Let's see, congratulations, Principal Miles, from one Dominican woman to another. Very proud. And do us proud, okay? Keep doing us proud. Shrek Jr., saw it on Sunday, fabulous. Cannot wait for Cinderella, I'll be there. I also want to thank the dance team for being here. I've mentioned before that my daughter, my daughter participated in the Franklin Junior Dance Team and got to dance at the halftime of the basketball game. Fabulous program. I, I, I support it fully and I hope that, well, others should also support. And, you know, their fundraising efforts, they're doing a great job. Thanks for being here. And Read Across America is coming up next week. I'm excited to read at McAfee Road School. So looking forward to that. It's still Black History Month. Happy Black History Month to everyone. And I believe that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Well, keep it quick as well. First of all, outstanding job by all of the artists that are here today, dancers, musicians alike. It shows the tremendous value of fine arts here in Franklin. And also, it shows the talent that we have as well in our youth. So congratulations to you guys, one and all. With that said, the Meet of Champions is March the 2nd, the Meet of Champions for track. We have the number one triple jumper, girls' triple jumper, Arden Gray, that is participating in that. So you guys tomorrow, if you see Arden in the hallways, tell her good luck. Tell her go get it and bring home the gold for Franklin.
Thank you. Lori?
Principal Miles, congratulations. We look forward to all of the wonderful programs that I know you'll initiate at the high school, to our dance team and to all of our fine arts professionals. I give a big thank you because without the teachers and the coaches leading these students, they would not develop. And arts is with them forever, to paraphrase what was said by one of our string quartet members. So I thank you all for your participation and for your leadership.
Thank you. Bill?
Two quick things. So if I was in Rome, I'd go out on the Vatican, Portico and say, "Non silvobis, gaudiam manium, habemus principal." And you're supposed to clap. I announce to you, great joy, we have a principal of Franklin High School. And I know that we should be very excited about a new principal. It is the most important job in the district. So we wish you the very best, Hennessy. I've been your representative at Pine Grove. I know what your work can be. You've got a tough road ahead, but we're behind you. But what I really wanted to talk about tonight speaks to all the talent that we heard. The musicians, the dancers, everything. Now listen carefully. Last night, my daughters took me to see Hell's Kitchen for a Christmas gift. My daughter Mariah, she's doing something with Alicia Keys program and she's got great seats. And I wanted to see Malia Joy Moon so much and they got me tickets. Now we were right, right in the middle. I was in absolute awe of her talent and in tears when she took the final bow. She's a Tony Award-winning actress, the lead on Broadway. After the show, I got backstage, because I'm shy, you know? I got backstage with my family and we took great pictures. If you're on my Facebook page, you'll see them, you should be, anyway. And she came up to me and said, "Mr. Grippo, thank my teachers. I love Franklin." I said, "Malia, listen, on behalf of the Board of Education," I'm, the, 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 Arden is going to love this, "would you come to Franklin? We want to do a Malia Joy, Joy Moon Day." "Oh, I'd love to, Mr. Grippo, but you have to talk to my manager." I don't know who a manager is. But anyway, I called Terry Sejo and I said, "Why don't you follow up on this, you and Tim Walton?" To bring Malia into our district now and we're talking about all this greatness, for our students to see her on stage and to hear her story. She gives credit like you did to, I'm glad you guys didn't run out of here tonight because you gave credit to your dance teacher. These musicians gave credit, as Dr. Ravalley said, to the music, the instrumental teacher. Malia gave credit to Terry, to Tim Walton, to, to other, to other, uh, arts teachers that she had. I remember her in, in, uh, what the heck, what is it, West Side Story, so many different plays when I was at McAfee and all, and at Samson. This is a Franklin student. Nick Solomon had, I mean, we, so we need to celebrate our students and that's what I told Malia. Mariah gave her a bunch of bracelets and, and she was so happy to talk to me about Franklin Township. I said, "Well, tomorrow night's the board meeting." She said, "Please give everyone my best. Thank you Franklin." That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bill. Dennis?
I'm not going to be as long as Bill, but that was great, Bill. That was great. Um, number one, thanks for all that came out to, uh, came to the mic to hear your voice. Um, you may not think, but we have heard everybody who stepped to the mic, that's number one. Uh, the dance team, hey, keep doing what you're doing, uh, very proud, um, uh, with kudos to the coach and, um, we are proud. Um, Coach Blair came up and, uh, it was good to see part of the Franklin staff step up to, uh, articulate the importance of, about not only the dance team, but also, um, his vision and his, um, what it takes from the, from elementary, uh, middle school path all the way up to the high school. And I think that's critical in all arenas of the extracurricular activities. I am going to give you the title already, Dr. Miles, congratulations. And as, uh, I said during the interview process, that, um, the best, uh, I would say that, um, the big shoes that you wore at Pine Grove and the marvelous job that you have done at Pine Grove, uh, expectations is there and I know you will do what you have done at Pine Grove at the high school. So, uh, it takes a village, so we, uh, we thank the family, uh, about the time that you would, um, that we would take away from the family and your experience that you would have at the high school. And as we close out, um, Black History Month, uh, I would like to, uh, just reflect on that. And as, um, as Lori said, I look forward to being, uh, in America also at Elizabeth Ave.
Thank you. So before I give my, um, you know, closing statement and good of the order, uh, Dr. Ravalley, would you like to address some of the comments that the public made?
Yeah, the FPS inclusion model, I, I, I heard that, uh, but we're gonna, if you would, maybe, Dr. Solomon, raise your hand if you would, if whomever that was would give Dr. Solomon a number, that would be wonderful because we're going to have the Director of Pupil Personnel Services reach out directly to you. That inclusion model, the, the training, the professional development within that, um, would all come out of that department. So we'll have, uh, PPS contact you directly, it'll be Dr. Sofield. Um, you know, of course, dance program funding certainly is part of the overall discussion uh, with regard to budgeting and we're going to be having a lot of those discussions in the very near future and for the next couple of weeks until we get to that preliminary budget, because we've got a lot of work to do, as I had shared with you in the beginning of the meeting when I talked about funding cuts and whatnot at the state level. Um, and then I think most of that really was around that, so, um, and the federal funding, I spoke on that when Mr. White came to the microphone earlier in the meeting and, you know, that hasn't changed, uh, at least from our perspective, that is part of the overall budgeting. And a lot of the federal funding supports, uh, what we call auxiliary programming that happened in the morning and evenings and sometimes throughout the day in our title schools. Um, so obviously those programs are tied directly to that funding and should that funding be affected, then of course those programs also get affected. So, uh, but they're not part of what is funded with what we call our general operating budget. Um, so that is tied to the state aid and the other revenue sources that I spoke about earlier. And I think that really is it, because most of that was about dance program and funding. And thank you, girls, for coming out. Honestly, thank you and, uh, thank you for your passion and you are wonderful. I have watched you and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you. So congratulations, uh, Ms. Miles again, um, and I am very proud that we have young talent in our district. So as we're closing out Black History Month and moving into Women's Month, we have International Day of Women coming up. Um, here is a message to my young girls, my young women and of course, other women. Um, there comes a moment when you realize the only thing standing between where you are and where you could be is you. How often do we wait for the right time, the right amount of confidence, the perfect circumstances? We convince ourselves that bold moves require absolute certainty when in reality, boldness is built in the act of moving forward before you feel ready. I've learned that playing it safe feels comfortable, but it rarely leads to growth. The moments that have shaped my life, my work and my impact weren't the ones where I had everything figured out. They were the ones where I took the risk, bet on myself and chose to move before fear could talk me out of it. So consider tonight your nudge. What's one bold step you've been waiting to take? What if instead of overthinking, you simply decided to go for it? Because being bold isn't about having all the answers, it's about trusting that you'll figure them out along the way. So that's my good luck and good wishes to all my women friends and my women, budding young women. Find a leader, find a woman leader that you can look up to and grow and be bold. And with that, we're gonna move back into confidential session. The regular portion of the meeting will now end. Can I get a motion to move into confidential? Moved by Dennis. Can I get a second? Seconded by Walter. We will go into confidential to finish up on discussing confidential matters and then we will come back to take action and then close out the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. It's 10:47, we're back from confidential session. We went to discuss confidential matters. Minutes of the confidential session meeting will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to move A4?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jimmy?
Seconded.
Seconded by Nancy. Brian, can we have roll call, please?
Just to confirm that we are inserting the word affirm.
Correct. We are inserting affirm for A4.
A4.
Case number 285234, FHS 01082025.
Mr. DiMegglio?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Mr. Grippo.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Innocencio?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Because he couldn't participate.
Oh, I didn't even realize.
Mr. Jackson could not participate, so he left the meeting.
Ms. LaCourte? Ms. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And with that, meeting is adjourned.